Well, good evening. Today is June 18th. Special day in our house. My daughter's 27th birthday. Everyone say happy birthday, Taylor.
Happy birthday, Taylor.
I'll have to make her go back and watch the video. So today is June 18th, 2018, and you are in a county commissioner meeting. If you had not intended to be at a county commission meeting, you're in the wrong place. But we hope you're in the right place tonight. So it's been the tradition of this board and thousands of boards across the United States, we start with a couple of things. One thing we start with is a pledge of allegiance, and then we have a chaplain that will come up and he'll give what is called a solemnizing prayer. And that prayer is for us, the commissioners, as we seek wisdom to do the right things for the people of Rowan County. So commissioners, if you would join me, we'll get started.
Dear Lord, thank for the privilege to be here today, and thank for our county commissioners, Lord. And I, over the years that I've known them, I know that they're dedicated to what they do, and I pray that you'll give them the knowledge and wisdom they need to make the right decisions. Thank for their love for this county, dear Lord, and thank for each person that's gathered here tonight. As the business is conducted tonight, Lord, I pray you'll guide us in this, Lord. I thank again for this privilege we have together tonight, to be able to do what we do tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Chaplain Taylor. Glad to see you. And to all the fathers out there, happy Father's Day. Hope you had a good weekend. All right, commissioners, we have, do we have any additions or deletions from the agenda that's been provided for us? And if not, do we have a motion to accept the agenda as provided?
So moved.
Second.
Favor say aye.
Aye.
And we have, the minutes have been provided to us from June 4th. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We have the consent agenda that has not been changed. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided.
So moved.
And a second. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we have public comment period. We have some folks that are signed up. Let me see here. Let me say before we get started with public comment, we will have an item later about business on Providence Church Road, and so we will have public comment then. So we don't want to stop you from being part of public comment as we do it now, but if you're signed up and want to comment on that item, we'll have time for public comment during that item. So I'll start here with the first folks. First page has nothing to do with that, but as we get going through here, as I call your name, if you'd like to wait until we have that item, then you can speak later. So we'll get going, and Renee McNutt is first up. So welcome. State your name and your address for the record.
Okay.
You have three minutes.
Okay. Renee McNutt, 311 Lance Avenue, here in Salisbury. And I'm here today to ask if you all will consider adding amendment to the current animal control, particularly the portion talking about restraints, where it refers to leashes and other means of restraining your animals. Currently, in the ordinance, both here at Rowan County and in the city of Salisbury, there's no leash length limit or requirement when you're in a public area. The city parks have them, but not public sidewalks, not downtown, not anywhere. And so that's, we're hoping that you at least consider and look into amending that, to make that a requirement. We have an issue in our neighborhood, a pretty significant issue, that has affected a lot of people with an individual that I believe has misinterpreted the, I think, I forget what the words say in the ordinance, but other instruments that could be considered a restraint. He uses an electronic shock collar, and it has a remote control to bring his dogs and heal them and supposedly keep them under his control. From the comments he's made in the neighborhood during different incidences, where his dogs can be up to an entire block away from his physical body, I'm not even sure if those things work that far away, but he feels that he has control because he has the ability to control him. He's not controlling him. But just having that makes him within the legal. He's made several comments to myself and neighbors about that. And that would be like if I had my dogs out on a six-foot leash, I let go of the leash, and they're a half a mile away from me, and my neighbor said, you know, "You're not controlling your dogs." Well, I'm in the, you know, well within the rights of the law because they're on a leash. I mean, I don't have the other end of the leash. And that's sort of what he's saying, like he can, they've, he's, they've attacked other dogs. They've made it to where taking your dog out, which anybody that has dogs and walks those dogs, that's a pleasurable thing as a dog owner, to go out and walk your dog. And now it's become an issue where you feel like you're on alert. Where is, where are the dogs? And now he's doing it on a Segway. He rides a Segway while the dogs are running around the neighborhood. I'm really concerned for the safety of everyone in our neighborhood, but let me say particularly our elderly. And I would just ask you, just imagine your 84-year-old grandmother, under doctor's orders, asking her to get exercise, and she's out walking her beloved companion, and these dogs are running after her, and they're aggressive. I mean, they're not just sniffing and doing their business or anything. And then she had to pick up her dog and try and run away because she doesn't know if they're in control. The guy's a half a block away, and these dogs are running after her. I think it's an accident, a serious accident, that's ready to happen, so please consider an amendment for that.
All right. Thank you very much. Someone signed you up, Isabel.
My name is Isabel Williams, proud member of the neighborhood here. Speaking about the dog, one of my concerns is the age that I'm at now and some of the illnesses I've had along the first six months, the last six months of this year, have left me with the inability to keep my balance when I'm walking, especially when I'm walking my dog. Luckily, she keeps me on a steady pace, but there are instances where other dogs, they see each other, and they've run at each other and pulled me off a little bit on my balance. Luckily, nothing serious. But one instance I know I remember is very well, and it frightened me, and actually frightened the dog, where the two, one of the two dogs got loose and came charging right at mine. And she's a strong little dog, and so she went to protect me, but she pulled me off balance, and I fell to my knees. But luckily, I yelled out for the owner of the dog, and he came and called the dog back. It's just, it seems to me that there should be a stronger law, stronger something for the city to do. When you're out walking your dog, just remember, you've got neighbors, you've got children, you've got other dogs around. You don't know what's going to happen. You've got to be aware. In my case, I do the best I can, but I fear for other people that have the problem with their balance when walking. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Carolyn Brown in Court Drake.
Carolyn Brown.
Court Drake.
303 Lance Avenue. I have a personal experience where my dog was attacked by these dogs because they were running free. And I'm usually not super coordinated, but I was able to kick one dog away and punch the other one between the eyes, but it's, yeah, I know, it was a miracle. But its mouth was on the back of my dog, it did draw blood. But I want to extend the conversation so that it's not a personal neighborhood problem. I've lived in Salisbury, he's brand new, since 2005, and this is the fourth time I've been attacked by dogs. One time was in the Greenway, where a person was there with their dog, but it was not on a leash, and attacked. And I could scoop up my dog and turn away, and then the owner got in charge of it. Another time, I was walking in West Square with a small dog, and two dogs were loose and attacked, and I know the owner. And it was a problem that they were frequently out. And a man came running out of his house and intervened at that point and helped me in that case. And so it's a total now of four different times. One time, I was in front of Renee's house, and the people across the street opened their front door, and their dog came running right out and bit my dog. So I'm concerned, because we do have older people, we do have children. I frequently walk my grandchildren in a stroller. It's not okay for a dog to be able to jump onto a child who's now restrained, they're strapped in a stroller and trapped. I just feel that to prevent the city and the county from potentially having something horrific happen and say later, gee, we kind of knew we should do this, but we didn't think it was that serious. I just feel that it probably should be addressed by people at your level, and then, of course, at the city level, so that we don't have any tragedies. We don't want to be in the newspaper for a child being mauled, its face ripped. These are horrific things that do happen when proper controls are not in place. So I've given my husband no time.
Well, there have been cases also when Carolyn was walking the grandchildren in the stroller, and also the dog. Our little dog is like seven, eight pounds, and she's on a leash always, and the dogs could come running up, and you have to choose between defending your grandchild and defending your dog.
And we know what we would do. Our grandchild would be defended, but it's just not an okay situation.
That's correct. So.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, and welcome to Rowan County. All right, so who I have next is Brad Taylor, Steve Jocelyn, Brad Eagle, Jim Cartner, Catherine Russ, Stephen West, Davis Simmons. And all those folks are signed up to talk about the ZO 3-18. You're welcome to speak now, or you can wait until we take that topic up. Would everyone like to wait? Okay. Is there anyone that doesn't want to wait? Okay, then we'll move on. Thank you. And then we have Tyra Carter. Welcome.
My husband is really the one that's supposed to be speaking, so we're combined time together.
Travis?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. Come on up.
Because I need a little more than three minutes, it'll be about four, five, four and a half, five minutes, for our time combined. My name is Travis Carter, and I just want to first say that this isn't directed at any one individual of the county, but I'm here as a concerned citizen to help substantiate and quantify the extremely inflated water and sewer rates for my town. Rowan Salisbury Utilities charges the same rate of $3.80 per 100 cubic feet for water and $5.13 per 100 cubic feet for sewer in the municipalities of Spencer, Salisbury, Rockwell, Granite Quarry, and you do charge a little more to the town of China Grove, which my town of East Spencer gets unjustly and unfairly charged double the rate of what all the other municipalities pay. I am also here in search of justification for what is to me apparently blatant unethical price gouging from the heavily monopolized Rowan Salisbury Utilities. I have met some truly great people in my town, since my wife and I have moved there a little over a year ago. But nobody I've talked to has a good understanding as to why we are charged so much, and that the rate is set to rise again this year by two and a half percent. I read that in 2009, the water meters were replaced throughout the town, and the rates were increased to pay for the installation, but the rates were supposed to go down once that cost was covered. And I'm pretty sure after nine years, that cost has been covered several times over. If all the water meters need replacing every 15 years, why didn't the other municipalities have similar increases individually assessed to them? I was also informed of a time a few years ago that my town was delinquent in paying its debt, and was assessed a fee of $10,000 per month until that debt was paid. Now, that was about 10 years ago, and surely, again, that debt was paid several times over, and the rates did not decrease. Additionally, now that all the leaks in the water lines have been repaired or replaced at the town's expense, again, the rates have not decreased. As I try to justify this in my mind, sadly, I can only rationally determine that the rates are so high in my highly impoverished and almost exclusively minority town because of race and the notion that maybe these people cannot stick up for themselves, or maybe we wouldn't have this issue if more people in my town looked like me. I do not represent the town, but I will suggest that maybe they implement a smell tax for the Town Creek wastewater facility that is in the East Spencer Tax District, or maybe they can charge a fee for the use of their water tower on North Street, either or both of which can be specifically rendered to equal the cost of the price difference for the water and sewer rates. Or maybe I should try to prove criminal behavior and start a class action lawsuit against Rowan Salisbury Utilities. I can only imagine the negative press and publicity generated by a lawsuit. I will conclude by saying, maybe I'm wrong, and there's a perfectly good explanation for why the rates are already so high and set to increase again. I tried to personally check the city's budget to see if there was a specific line item to itemize what that money was used for. I had no luck. I just want to ask each member, I know there's a lot going on, so it's probably not likely, to shed light on this problem. If you did have a chance to respond, I'm sure it would help me and others decide how to vote in November. I do recall reading each candidate's bio who's running this time in the Salisbury Post, and each one made mention of not just representing Salisbury, but representing the entire county. And I want to ask, who is representing East Spencer in this matter?
If you'll contact us later.
Yes, sir.
We can, we can help you. All right. All right, we'll move on to item number three, and that is a public hearing and presentation on Project Frozen by Scott Shelton of the EDC. Scott, and Rod.
Actually, Rod would like to take a moment in advance of Scott getting up.
You have 30 seconds.
I can do it. I can do it. Let's see, let's start the clock. I just wanted to give you an update on what we're doing at the EDC, particularly with regards to some of the marketing that we have underway. I was with Commissioner Klusman the other night, and she had a copy of our new brochure in her hand, and she had not seen it before, and so I wanted to make sure that you all received a copy of that to let you know how we are positioning and marketing the county and using the new branding initiative that you approved several years ago to help promote economic development in the county.
Thank you.
And while I'm here, I want to tell you that it's really exciting time in Rowan County for economic development. We are busier than ever. We just finished a year where our prospect activity was up 20%. We had 75 different requests for information, about information on locating or expanding in Rowan County. We have a really, another new prospect for the tree bee site. We have a report this week that there are two very strong prospects for the Granite Quarry site that the commissioners have invested in. Later this week, we are showing the Platinum Site to a Chinese tire manufacturer that could employ up to 1,000 persons in Rowan County. In addition to that, we have an e-commerce fulfillment center that's looking at us from outside of the area. We have another global manufacturer that's looking at this location as well. And we have interest from a developer in the site that we identified in China Grove as one that we wanted to get certified for a development that they have in mind. In addition, we have several existing businesses that are expanding. I think there's at least a half a dozen that we're working with right now that are in different stages of expanding, creating anywhere from 50 new jobs up to over 200, and investments up to $200 million in new capital investment. So there's a lot, a lot of activity going on, and one of the projects that we've been working on for a number of years is on your agenda tonight, and that's our project Frozen, and one that you've listened to some details with before. But we have some updates, we have some great movement on this project, and I'd like to have Scott come up at this time to introduce the project and make a request, unless you have any questions afterwards. I'll be available. Thank you.
Thank you, Rod.
Thanks, Rod, and thank you, Mr. Eds and rest of the board, for hearing this request. This is, as Rod said, been a long time coming, but hopefully, we're in the home stretch now. Again, the project is Project Frozen, and this is one we've been working on since 2009. And again, we hope it's coming to a conclusion here pretty soon. What we're looking at is a potential $9 million investment in Rowan County after the two phases would be complete, and also an estimated $356,353 of new tax revenue for the town, I'm sorry, for the, that's a typo, I apologize, for the county over the next 10 years, based on the current tax rate of 66.25 cents. Also, the creation of 40 new jobs by the end of the second phase of the project, and of course, an opportunity to support a new employer in Rowan County. Tell you a little bit about the company. It's called WJD Cold Storage, and was established in 2012. Its members are William Malloy, Joey Emmons, Brian Duncan, and Jaclyn Patterson. And Mr. Malloy and Mr. Emmons are here in the audience tonight, in case any questions you want to ask of them. These folks have extensive experience in the frozen food distribution and logistics industry, and back in, I guess back to 2009, they saw a glaring need for a modern cold storage facility to meet current standards. What they're proposing to do is build a 42,000-square-foot high-tech cold storage facility that would have capacity for 3,500 pallets. And the company anticipates expanding within two to three years after this first phase into a second phase that would more or less double the size of the facility to 81,000 square feet and add another 3,500 pallets. And there's a rendering, a hypothetical rendering, I'm sure there's some details need to be worked out, but that gives you an idea of the type of modern facility that they'd be looking at doing. And as far as the project itself, the initial investment for Phase 1 would be a little over $5 million, and then, of course, at full buildout, $9 million. And again, I mentioned the 40 jobs. Right now, we're looking at an average wage of $41,469 for these 40 new full-time jobs. As far as the location, I know this has been talked about, but what the company is proposing is to build on a lot at the, I guess really at the end of the Granite Industrial Park. This lot is identified as parcel 404147, and it's currently owned by the town of Granite Quarry. The company plans to purchase this site from the town. As you can see on your map there, the building in the circle there, it's an older picture, but it's Gilley, and you can see where the lot is in relation to Gilley. Of course, in order to meet their needs and get access to the site, Shemandy Drive would have to be extended about 650 feet. Also, a 12-inch water line along Shemandy would have to be extended that same length. We've had a preliminary engineering report done on this project, and engineer's estimate was $507,000 for the cost of these improvements. And of course, to get to this property, the town would have to ask Rowan County to grant an easement to extend this road down to the new site. The likely path of this easement would be along the common property line of two parcels that the county currently owns, 403199 and 403200. The town is currently working on a draft easement agreement for your consideration. They hope to have that to you at the next meeting. And we've also had a lot of meetings with state officials regarding grant opportunities to help pay for this road, and we've been given assurances that this is a strong candidate for the rural infrastructure grant through EDPNC and Department of Commerce. In this situation, the town of Granite Quarry would be the applicant, not the county, and the town would be responsible for the local match for the project. Again, this is a project through the town of Granite Quarry. We would help coordinate the permitting aspects with the town and also with the county inspections department for the appropriate reviews and permits. We don't anticipate anything unusual about this project at this stage. And as far as assistance, this project, we feel meets the adopted incentive grant program from the county for a Level 1 grant. Minimum's normally $5 million, this is a $9 million investment, and the company is requesting assistance tonight from the county under this program. And as you have in your packet, there's a fiscal projection for this project, and of course, we had to make some assumptions to generate this estimate, and of course, we estimate the current tax rate at 66.25 cents for right now. And we're also estimating that 5.14 million would be completed, new equipment and construction, that is, would be completed by the end of this year. I know it's a very aggressive timetable, but the company's in a hurry to get started. Also, we're estimating the second phase be done by December 31st, 2021. That would be an additional 3.93 million for a total investment of all phases of $9.07 million. And there in your packet is the projections we had for the project. And as far as projected revenue for the county, we project over three years, it would generate about $34,000 of new revenue for the county. Under the current terms of your incentive program, it would generate a grant of about $25,500 for the company itself. Rowan County would retain about $8,500. And of course, this is estimated based on the $5.1 million initial investment. As I mentioned earlier, the company expects to begin a second phase within two years of the first phase's completion, but we try to be conservative in our estimates. So as you'll see in your packet, we've run the numbers with an idea of the second phase starting after three years instead of two. So of course, these numbers could change. And during the last two years of this incentive agreement, with a Phase 2 in place, it would generate about $60,000 for Rowan County, and would generate for those two years a grant of $45,000 for the company, and $15,000 would be retained by the county.
Can I ask a question? Is that Phase 2, is that also, would that be part of this five-year agreement?
It would be, the first three years, revenue would be based on the first phase, and the last two on the expanded project.
But only for two years?
Only two years, that's correct. And overall, during those five incentivized years, Rowan County would collect $222,503 in revenue and provide an incentive grant that totaled $166,878. During this time, the county would retain $55,625. In over 10 years, the county would collect about $523,000 for this project, disperse the grant we just mentioned, and would retain about $356,000 of new revenue. Of course, Rowan County would provide this grant in installments over a five-year period. The company could only request payment after all the taxes have been paid to the county. And of course, each fiscal year, they request dispersment, they have to certify that employment goals have been met prior to receiving payment. If the company failed to live up to these employment goals, the grant would be reduced accordingly until the employment goals were met. And of course, the reduction would be based on a percentage of the goal not met for that current year. And as part of your standard callbacks, if the company were to cease operations or eliminate the majority of its workforce within 12 months, the agreement would be terminated, and the company would be required to repay all grant proceeds within the prior 36 months prior to closing.
Scott, along with the number of employees, would the average salaries be a part of this contract also?
It would be a part of the contract with the state. In past instances, we haven't required it for our grants, but that's certainly a condition I think you guys could discuss.
They're required to be at or above. They're required to be at or above insured average for industry in Rowan County. So there is a minimum requirement already built into the statute that they have to meet.
Yeah. And in this case, with the state incentives, they go with the county average wage, which right now they estimate to be $19.97, so they have to meet 90% of that goal to qualify for these grants, so I think.
They're using an average of $41,000 in here, which is.
They're using an average of $41,000 in here, which is a lot different than the minimum that they could get by with, is what I was asking. Not that they would, I just, for my information, I want to know if it was tied also, that the income level would be tied also.
Okay. And that's certainly something we can add to the agreement, if need be.
Scott, could I ask you what type of incentive they're receiving from the Town of Granite Quarry?
Town of Granite Quarry is paying the local match for the grant. In this case, it is estimated to be about $25,000. The town is also, I guess, providing the land to the company. I'm not sure what the final appraisal will be as far as the value of the land, but they are providing that with a deferred payment. I guess they have, and maybe William can speak to this, but they have several years, I think, before they have to start paying for it. Also, it's my understanding that the town is going to pay for some of the paperwork, such as the easement being drawn up and things of that nature.
Okay.
But as far as the tax incentive grant, there is none at this point under consideration. Question? Okay. In closing, the company would create 40 new jobs if this project were to move forward. And of course, the county, during its five-year incentive period, would retain about $55,000 of new revenue, and over 10 years, about $356,353. And again, opportunity to support a new business in our community. And I'll be glad to answer any questions about this, or if you'd like to ask some questions of the company, they're here as well.
So what the, what does the, so how does it work? Do they have customers that store materials there in the cold storage? Or do they buy and sell?
It's basically frozen food. I mean, and we may want to come and speak to this, but it's, you know, companies like grocery stores, you know, milk manufacturers, they pay for pallet space to keep these items, you know, cold and shipped on to their appropriate stores.
That's the correct answer. Correct answer.
Basically, what our company is, in layman's terms, so everybody understands, it's just a big freezer like you got at home. We got companies that go out, produce product from their plant, they bring it to us, and in some cases, we have to call what we say blast freeze. Takes 36, 72 hours blast freeze product. We stored until they're ready to ship out, either overseas as an export, or they have local companies here that they want to ship to as well. So we just hold on to their product until they're ready for it. So it's basically, you bring it in, we hold it, we ship it out. All in layman's terms, very simple project.
Gotcha.
But a big need for it.
So you have to go, Irene, do you already have?
Yes. We have customers lined up, ready to go. You know, a lot of times, you know, companies have different seasons, their peak seasons, as to when they need products stored, when they're doing most of their production. And we're right in the middle to where, you know, we got some customers that say, hey, William, can you get it up and running by the end of the year? So contracts ending, we can pin new contracts coming to you. So we have letters of intent and actually negotiating some contracts as well.
Thank you.
That's it? Any more questions?
Just your name, please.
William Malloy. M-A-L-L-O-Y.
We were going to invite you up next, William. Anything else you want to bring up while you're here?
No, no, I think that's it. I really appreciate the opportunity you guys give us to bring this company, you know, to the area. Hopefully, we can communicate and bridge and bring things together. We really want to work with the community, so, you know, with the colleges, you know, workforce. And that's what we're all about. And I think we're interested in developing a relationship with the county and helping it grow, because of course, we want to continue on this process in other areas as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, William.
Yes, ma'am.
Where else are you located?
Right now, this will be our first location that we're building as far as the cold storage is concerned.
Okay.
So yeah, this will be our first location that we were bringing up. So this is our baby.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions for William or for Scott? All right. Thank you very much. I would say, for a point of information for commissioners, Scott did mention that the road, Shemandy Drive, would have to be extended through the cul-de-sac, and the county would have to agree to that, but not just the county. As you all recall, Easter Creek has options on that. So EDC and the cold storage folks and Easter Creek met last week, and Easter Creek has endorsed providing access to that. And so we would be asked to do the same. All right. So at this point, we're going to open up the floor to a public, for public comment, for anyone who would like to speak for or against this incentive grant. All right. So not seeing any, we'll close the hearing. And commissioners, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the incentive grant for Project Frozen.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Best of luck to you. Go build a big building and hire lots of people and Godspeed. Yeah, good luck to you. Thank you, Joey. All right, item number four, Shane, for ZO418.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. All right, so the applicant, Walter Rumpel, on behalf of the Better Care Assisted Living LLC, is requesting a zone change for property at 234 North Dale Avenue here, tax parcel Site's located at the corner of North Dale and Johnson, just north of West C Street. And the big gray area that you see on the map is the Kannapolis ETJ. So it's just within a few, or I think 200 feet, of the planning and zoning jurisdiction of the county. Zooming into that site, the property totals three and 3/4 acres. And you see on the lower side of the lot, addressed as 204, this was the original facility at the site built in 1950 that had a retirement home, rest home. And now, this portion is a six-bed family care home. And in 1987, the property was improved to a larger facility, 8,800 square feet, which is the main facility, a 25-bed assisted living operation here. So the site is currently zoned rural agricultural, and the proposed zone change would go to institutional. A district, we only have one other in the county. We adopted that in 2003 at the directions of the Board of Commissioners for staff to develop a new district for use. So as such, this would be the second request and district designation in the county. Few pictures of the area, the first few of the structure itself. This is the building front from North Dale Avenue, and also the rear from Johnson Street, and also its access here to the rear from Johnson Street. And this is the front of the smaller, the six-bed facility there. And around the area, you'll see there's mainly housing around the site. In the top right, this is the newest home added to the neighborhood. It was built about, I believe, within the last year. All right, so on this map here, you see a lot of yellow on the left-hand side of the screen. That represents the RA zoning designation. The red is CBI. Of course, all the little black outlined areas are structures, and this makes up largely the Ennixville community. You see the Kannapolis ETJ line here, and these colors transition into Kannapolis's zoning jurisdiction. O and I would be very similar to our institutional district, and then they also have a commercial zone. The rest are medium-density residential, probably not much different than our, for the county. As a comparison, you see the institutional district is very narrowly tailored to the service sector use, and most specifically, the health sector and social sector as well for the operations that are permitted by right. Very few conditional allowed in those areas. The rest is not permitted. So it surprisingly would be similar to the RA if you had a home occupation that we're familiar with as an SR business for this one exclusive service sector category. The Land Use Plan doesn't have a lot of comment on this specific district. It's more associated with commercial, industrial, residential. So for what it's worth, I think there might be one small little nugget carved out that could be used when you're talking about a community node. So from the census designated place boundary, at the census.gov site, this is the Ennixville CDP boundary. So you see the sites in the middle, and I think anybody familiar with that area would know this is part of that community. Here's the notice that typically comes with any rezoning, letters to adjoining property owners signed posted on the site, and also a public hearing notice in Salisbury Post. So all that executed there. At the planning board meeting, it was unanimous to recommend approval. And for procedures, we have the two statements, reasonableness, consistency, and a last motion on the request on page five. Of course, you have in the staff report what the planning board recommended for consistency and reasonableness. Any questions of the board?
Yeah, Shane, well, actually, this might be better for the person that's applying. Is the applicant here tonight?
I don't see him in the audience.
I am curious as to how agriculture use is compatible with the institution.
In terms of?
If you want to go back a few slides, what's permissible? Oh, right there. That agriculture is permitted and the institutional zoning.
It's an allowed use, and for the most part, agriculture, this is going to be more in line with a bona fide farm, which is exempt from zoning. So that may be, you know, what you're thinking in terms of that line item. But these are big-picture ticket items, and that one there would be bona fide farm.
Okay, thanks.
All right, any other questions for Shane?
Shane, I just want to ask one question, because in 2003, I was still in high school, and I wasn't aware that we had an industrial zoning in the county. Would you tell me where that particular parcel is?
We have an institutional zone on Emmanuel Church Road. It was a small daycare.
Okay.
That is the only other in the county.
Okay, thank you.
2003?
Sounds great.
That's a long time in high school.
His math.
What year did you start?
62.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just have...
I can pick on someone else.
I appreciate you taking the heat.
Yeah, Jim Green's like, thank goodness, finally someone's...
Just for the record, these are going to be assisted living beds, and if the applicant were here, I would ask him about the certificate from the state for putting in new assisted living beds, because it's my understanding that the state is not giving those at this time, because there's too many available.
Yeah, we're not, this doesn't have anything to do with beds, though.
Note, sir, as a side note...
I understand that. If we're going to rezone it for a specific use, but like I said...
Right, it's a general zoning, so it's, if you look in the background, that's more the basis for it. It makes it conforming. It allows a small improvement that they're wanting to do, not additional beds.
Anything else? All right, thank you, Shane. All right, we'll open up the floor for a hearing for anyone that would like to come forward and speak on this rezoning. Is there anyone? I bet on the next one, we have a few. All right, if there are none, we'll close the hearing, and commissioners will discuss. Or on page five, we have a statement of reasonableness. If I can get a commissioner to offer that up.
I'll make the motion, the conditional reasonableness. In accordance with Section 21-362J of the Rowan County Zoning Ordinance, and after due consideration, ZO4-18 is reasonable and is in the public interest based on the following: The institutional zone was formed for residential group homes such as the one in the residential area. It is reasonable use for expanding our existing services. It has been existed, it has also existed in the current use for previous 30 years. I'll make that form of a motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Statement of consistency?
I'll make a statement of consistency. ZO4-18 is consistent with Area 2 of the Western Land Use Plan based on the following: The institutional zone was formed for residential group homes such as the one in this residential area. It is reasonable use for expanding our existing services. I'll make that in form of a motion.
But can I ask a question? I believe this is O3-18. Where are you getting O4?
I'm reading this thing right here.
On mine, it says O3.
You're on five, we're on four.
That gummit. Sorry, moved ahead. I'm so excited. O418.
Make that in form of a motion.
Thank you. All right, we have a second.
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Then do we have a motion to approve ZO418?
Yes.
All right, now, second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Shane. Aaron Poplin. Sent the young guy up here, didn't they? Yeah.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we are here for a public hearing of ZO3-18, a request from RA to CBI with a conditional district. And this is for tax parcel 614, 188, 187, 186, and 185, at approximately the 2,700 block of Providence Church Road. So a little background about the site. It's four lots here totaling about 6.26 acres. They were part of a subdivision back in 2006. And one of the interesting things about these parcels here is they don't perk on-site. So they actually have an easement, a utility easement on the front property line here that takes it all the way back to parcel 614-008 for use as a septic field. So here is the actual plat from 2006. We're looking at lots seven, six, five, and four. And then just for reference, we have the 20-foot easement here going all the way back to that utility lot I just mentioned. So take a look at the Eastern Land Use Plan. We're looking at Area 2, which is areas adjacent to municipalities and next to High Rock Lake. And zooming in on the area, Area 2 recommends rural businesses off of thoroughfares, and Providence Church Road is recognized as a minor thoroughfare. And then for those type of businesses, it generally recommends the Neighborhood Business District. Now, in the area, we have had two rezonings. We had ZO407, which is a 2.3-acre portion of the adjacent parcel from RA to CBI. And then just here recently, about a mile up the road, we had a four-and-a-half-acre parcel go from RA to Neighborhood Business with a conditional district. So take a look at the vicinity here. As you can see, we have the site right here off of Providence Church Road. And to the north of the site is mostly single-family development. You can see the earlier rezoning here for Neighborhood Business. And then right adjacent to the parcel, we have the High Rock Boat and Ski Club, which is part of a 16-acre CBI development or district. And then adjacent to that is the 100-plus-unit RS Zone subdivision, Waters Edge. So taking a look at the site, looking west, we can see the road kind of slopes back down towards High Rock Lake. Looking south, it's just pasture land. And looking back east, you can just make out the Boat and Ski Club sign as you head back towards Bringle Ferry Road. And then taking a look at the site itself, it's a pretty wooded property. There's the road that leads back in towards the proposed development, and then just general tree coverage. So right here is the... So right here is the proposed site plan with a conditional district. This is the most important part because what's on the site plan is the only allowed use. So we just kind of walked through it. The first portion here is a 40-by-70 building. This is proposed for personal storage and as part of the business. Then we have the handicap accessible parking space here is number three. Number four is the outside work area for his dock construction business. Number five is the driveway. Number six is the parking area for the building. And then number seven is a gravel storage area that's to be fenced for his construction equipment and his personal property. And that area totals about 23,000 square feet. So just take a look at the compatibility uses with RA. Most things are only permitted in this district with an SR standard, the special requirement generally being that the owner lives on-site. And then with the proposed district, we're looking at only the allowed uses are the ones that are requested, which would be the heavy construction contractor for docks and boatlifts, and then the storage of boats, trailers, and construction equipment. Take a look at potential impacts on facilities. The road out there, Providence Church Road, has a design capacity of 13,600 vehicles per day. And back in 2013, the average daily vehicle turnout was 1,300 vehicles. And we have heard from DOT that the existing driveway now does meet site distance for a commercial driveway permit. So we took a, take a look at the utilities. The lot does not perk on-site. And according to environmental health, they have not installed the proposed septic system for the community septic. But preliminary talks with building inspections has indicated that the proposed use is not going to require a septic system. And then we have also been in talks with Cube Hydro, and they've indicated that there's going to be a, for the dock construction use, we'll need a multi-use operation facility permit from them. Then we have the statements of reasonableness from the planning board, along with the statements of consistency. And the planning board did approve the recommendation, and they did put some conditions on there. So the first condition was the trees to remain on the property outside of what's proposed. So they're looking at anything that's not on the proposed development to keep the remaining tree coverage. They wanted to make sure that item number seven, which is that gravel storage area, be noted as personal storage only. That they want the applicant to obtain Cube Hydro, the permit from Cube Hydro for the dock construction. The applicant must obtain a commercial driveway permit from the DOT. The applicant must comply with approved site plan. The applicant must approach Rowan County for septic system in sight of the metal building, and that the hours of operation are limited to Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Saturday, 9:00 to 12:00. And that was different than what was originally proposed. And then just a couple of staff comments. This property does adjoin an existing CBI district. The request fronts on a minor thoroughfare. The Eastern Area Land Use Plan recommends rural business along thoroughfares, with neighborhood business being the preferred district. The property may be subject to restrictive covenants that are not enforced by the county, and the only uses proposed on the site plan should be considered. So after the courtesy hearing has been conducted, you'll need to discuss potentially mutual agreed-upon conditions, adopt a statement of reasonableness, adopt a statement of consistency, and then approve, deny, or table ZO3-18. And then both me and the applicant are here tonight for any questions.
Can you back up one slide, please?
Yeah.
Property may be subject to restrictive covenants that are not enforced by the county. Is that because it's part of that Boat and Ski Club subdivision?
Yes, back in '06, when that subdivision was made, it was primarily made for residential development, so it did have a set of covenants recorded with it. And while those covenants may restrict these kind of uses, the county itself does not enforce those.
Has anyone spoken to them?
The current majority owner has been part of this application process, and Barry Childers has been in contact with them.
But that's not our business.
Mm-mm.
Aaron?
Back up one more slide, just a second, please. That one must apply Rowan County for the septic system in sight of the metal building. I thought you said that it didn't perk, and there wasn't any way they could put a septic system in there.
That's correct. It's, the planning board just wanted to make sure that they went to, that he goes to environmental health as part of the process.
Aaron, could you back up one more slide, please?
Yeah.
I was out to the property, and I didn't realize the first parcel is totally cleared from the site down to the lake. Now, was that the expectation of the planning board?
Well, the planning board, when they came up with these, they wanted to maintain what was on, everything that was outside of the proposed development. Whether that portion that's been clear cut was part of the site plan, I'm not 100% sure. I'd have to go see it. But as of now, when the conditions get made, that'd be something to consider.
Can you go back to the aerial picture then of the lots that show the trees?
This one right here.
So when the planning board saw this presentation, then they're assuming that all the trees from the building down to the lake and out in front of the lake, then were going to stay?
Yes, so all the trees that you see in this general area and this area here are what they were proposing that should stay. It was just the trees that get in the way of making this gravel storage area, and these buildings here in the dock construction area that they were okay with losing.
So now, okay. So if you went out and took an aerial again right now, it would show that all the trees are cleared from the building down to the lake. So that would be...
What's this photo from, 14?
Yes, this is from 14.
Going back to the septic system?
Mm-hmm.
Can you go back to, go forward to the...
Which one?
Other way.
Up, other way. You want the conditions?
Conditions, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I guess I have a question, too, on the applicant must approach Rowan County for the septic system in sight of the metal building. Has that been done?
Has he gone, has the applicant gone and talked to environmental health?
Yeah, I mean, you're putting up a new building, and in my conversations with the applicant, he said that there was no need for a septic system on this bill, within this building, that basically there'd be no bathroom. And so I was just wondering if that was... If the planning board...
I think what, I think what you've said is that he's not required to have bathroom facilities. But if at some point he chooses to have bathroom facilities, he would have to come to the environmental health to get a permit to run lines up that easement and up into the location that is planned for that, for that septic, which you could show on that map. You showed it before, if you want to go back to that map.
Yeah, we have the, we got the map of the actual septic easement there, which is the front 20 feet of all these lots that goes back to the lot, which is just covered by some of this information here. And I believe the general intent of the planning board on those conditions was that they meet what the environmental health would require of them if they do need a septic system.
So your point is he's not required by planning board or the planning department to have a bathroom?
Right. We would just look at the land use itself, and if building inspection, if the type of building he puts up there doesn't require a bathroom, then according to building inspections, they did not need a septic system.
But if he chooses to...
Then he would need to go...
Down the road, then you would fast forward to your requirements, which would be that he worked with environmental health to put in a septic system that meets standard. That's all they're saying there, right?
Yeah, that's exactly what we're looking at.
That makes sense.
Yeah. I still really question that whole issue based upon the fact that there's going to be construction going on on-site. Therefore, you're going to have employees there, and you're going to need septic.
I can't speak to that. Shane, Ed, is that y'all's decision? Could you, could you maybe enlighten? I know that was an issue of he needed it, he doesn't need it, and we don't know any of that. So if you could give us some definitive...
That's a building inspections call, and we reached out to the department, and per the, what the applicant shared that they want to do with the facility, it did not require one. So of course, again, once this, if this is approved and we permit it as a zoning authority subject to whatever conditions are herein, it goes to the inspections department again. If it meets their standards based on the use, then they make the determination if it's needed or not.
So essentially, what you're saying, Shane, is zoning has nothing to do with construction.
It doesn't matter if he has a bathroom in it or not.
Right. He could build a barn, he wouldn't have to have it.
If they're happy, we're happy.
All right.
So I guess the question is, where are they going to go to the bathroom when they're working there? I guess that's what everybody's asking. All right? Is there no, there's no answer? Is it a portage on?
The use, the use from a zoning, we approve commercial buildings all the time, and, but we don't have anything to do with how many bathrooms, or whether they need bathrooms, or whether they need anything else. We just deal with, with the use. When they go into actual construction or making any improvements, if those improvements require permits, that's where they have to deal with inspections, and whether that particular structure requires bathrooms. But just because somebody's going to be on-site working doesn't mean there has to be a bathroom necessarily. But, but bottom line is, we deal with the use, not the improvements from the standpoint of what building code requires for any of the trades that we use inspections for, until they submit a plan that requires a permit to inspections, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I've got one last question. It was proposed that the woods in the front were going to stay to, to keep the site of the buildings down. And they kept the woods in the back, but they went ahead and cut the front off. Is that my understanding?
Yeah, that's what it's sounding like, has happened out there, is that the trees here are still there, but you're saying that the trees back here have been cut down?
Yes.
We, we've been out there, we know. So we'll, we'll talk to the applicant about that.
Okay.
So, okay.
Yeah, that could be part of the conditions that you look into.
All right, any other questions for staff? All right, thank you very much. Would the applicant like to, to speak? Yeah, okay. State your name and address.
Barry Childers, 1225 Pebble Point, Salisbury, North Carolina. Thank you, Chairman and Board. This property here was actually in foreclosure in 2014, when this picture was actually taken here, okay? The guy that I bought the property from, or buying the property from, actually brought a grading company in and graded two-thirds of all that out from where my building was going to be to the water, okay? He did leave a few trees, okay? And a few of those trees were dead, okay? So what I did do is grade that property where it could be mowed, maintained, and got rid of the dead trees and the gully that was in it, and it opened it up all the way to the water, okay? Nothing has since, the planning board has approved this, nothing, and they did see a drone footage up here on the screen that night that Mr. Brad Boss took a picture of, of that land. So they did see it firsthand. And nothing else has been done to this property since then, other than a little bit of mowing has been done. No other trees are planned to be taken down, other than just what it takes for number seven, the fenced area for the boat and trailer area. That area right there needs just a little bit of attention for grading. And I have spoken with Deener on getting a site plan together for erosion control for that. Any other questions on that? And for as having the building there with septic, we have always had a portage on on-site where we build our floating docks. Rowan Septic has always furnished me with portages, and I just have a yearly contract with him. And I would just have it placed over in the wooded side over there in the parking lot, so it would not be visible. But we do have a portage on.
Mr. Childers, when Chairman Eds and I were out visiting the other day, you were talking about number two, your porch?
Yes.
And how you're going to enjoy using that, which I would, too.
Well, that porch is not to be used for like lounging out and things like that. That's not what I intended for, okay? That porch is actually going to be used to house lumber. That will be, because I have a relatively nice house there in Pebble Point, that's where I'll be hanging out. But there's, that porch is for use of putting lumber where it will not warp when it's left outside.
That was not my understanding the other day.
That's what I heard.
That's what I explained to Greg.
Yeah, that's what he said.
Because when I buy lumber in 40 pieces at a time, and it's bundled together, and I have two or three pieces left over, that's where it'll be, under the awning right there to keep it from warping.
All right, what other, what other questions do you have?
I have another question. Do you own all of the lots now?
No, presently, I'm ready to close on the 614-188, right there. And the other three parcels are just leased parcels right now.
So you have closed on the first one?
No, I'm ready to close on it.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Anything else from you?
No, other than the fact that this property is not intended or will be used for a campground in any means. And I know that's what a lot of these people are asking for, to make sure that this property never, ever gets used for a campground. And I have nothing tied to me to the guys that own the High Rock Boat and Ski Club that are getting ready to put in a proposed campground. in a proposed campground. I have nothing to do, other than we share a property line together.
The other thing Barry, if I have it correct, did I hear you correctly when you said that you were going to put a fence?
Yes, I will be putting a fence down that red, where the red boundary is between me and the High Rock Boat and Ski Club. Looking at putting probably a woody fence all the way down through there.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right, now the fun begins. So we're going to have a public hearing, and we try to be nice here. So we want you to address us, this is for the board. So you address us and only us. We're going to keep things nice. And I guess that's all I'll ask. So we'll go back to our list. Let's see here.
You're going to open the public hearing?
Yeah.
You're going to set a three-minute time limit?
All right, so we'll open the public hearing now, and we're going to begin with Bradford Taylor. Come forward and, of course, we know who you are now, just state your address. And glad to have you.
Thank you. I'm Brad Taylor. I live at 440 Waters Road. I'm a school teacher down here at China Grade Middle School, so I appreciate all that you guys do. My property is about a hundred yards from the proposed dock building site. I was down there today with my son and my wife. We spent the afternoon, we enjoyed it. I'm looking up at a completely cleared lot. I'm going to be looking right into the metal building. At the end of the day, I've reached out to all y'all. Y'all all know my concerns, and I appreciate you taking the time. This question's been coming out. Mr. Eds called me back. My biggest concern is, is what's going to happen down the road. I'm not talking about a campground, but a campground's a prime point because in 2007 I had no clue to come speak out to a planning board or talk to anybody when they rezoned the Boat and Ski Club as commercial. And now I'm looking over at campers that have been there since last October. My concern is down the road. And if we zone this now, you zone it conditional, CBI, whatever you want to call it, down the road it's going to be a foot in the door because somebody's going to come back and say, what else am I going to do with it? And even more importantly, the last three lots that Mr. Childers is proposing, or the last three of the six that Mr. Childers is proposing to purchase right there, owned by the same people, are going to eventually come back and ask the same thing. Nobody's going to want to come in there and put a house. They're going to want to come in and put a business because it's right beside another business. And then I'm going to be looking at it, two different businesses across there, possibly four or five, because there's three more lots down there. It's not what I want to look at. It's not what I want to hear. It's not what I busted my tail to get a house on the lake and spend time out there with my family to look over and watch docks being built all year round. And I mean, that's, you guys have heard all my other concerns. I've reached out to all y'all. It's not the here and now. I mean, I'd probably make as much noise mowing the yard, but the point is, it's what's possibly going to happen down the road. And I just, I don't feel like there's a lot of honesty in it. I mean, you know, they say, oh, nothing was cleared. It's cleared all the way across. There's nothing else going to be cleared. You're going to have to clear a big chunk of land and put that fence in an area. Now there's a big dock on it, I mean, a big deck on the back. I'm going to be looking up at more stuff stored on the back of it. You can't fence it, you can't fence it high enough for me not to see it. When he says he left trees, there's three trees down at the lake, period. That's it. No sound buffer. I can't really see it from my porch right now because there's leaves on the trees. Once it hits winter time, I'm going to be looking dead across that. That's pretty much all I have to say. You guys have heard everything. I've emailed all y'all. I hope you take all that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Next is Steve Jocelyn.
Thank you.
If you'll just give us your address.
My address is 125 Waters Road, Salisbury, North Carolina, 28146.
Thanks, Steve.
I'm here to respectfully appeal that Mr. Childers' request for rezoning of these four parcels be denied for the following reasons. Original request Mr. Childers made was for one parcel of 1.8 acres. I don't understand the sudden need for expansion to 6.26 when 1.8 was considered adequate to meet his needs. Is that reasonable? Is that necessary? In 2017, BOC tabled a similar request, Z0917. They did not approve it until it was changed to an NBCD request. A CBI district is typically from more densely developed suburban areas, major transportation corridors and major crossroads communities. That's a quote from the paperwork from tonight. The proposed development is not compatible with the surrounding areas of Waters Road, Deer Lake Run, or Little Crane Cove Lane, which are solely residential, single-family development, and farmland. The proposed development does not serve the public good of the county, but only serves the people who reside on High Rock Lake, who might choose Mr. Childers to build a manu or replacement dock or repair existing dock or a boat lift. There are other dock builders available to meet the need already on the lake. Providence Church Road is a recognized minor thoroughfare, and the East to Rowan land use plan recommends NB zoning off minor thoroughfares. To the best of our knowledge, a multi-use operating facility permit from Cube Hydro has not been issued. Regarding conditions in the vicinity, records indicate the day's grading and hauling is located on Barga Road, not on Providence Church Road. Five-year-old traffic data on Providence Church Road is dated at best. These lots do not perk. I have concerns about runoff, wastewater and septic. How can we be assured that it doesn't end up in the very shallow waters of Church Creek Cove? How exactly will rezoning these residential lots advance public health, safety, and welfare? And how will this affect the public collage at large? Again, it will only affect persons who live on the lake and can afford a new boat lift or dock. Regarding spot zoning, this is not compatible with a number of very residents who settled in the high rock area for peace and quiet and to enjoy the nature of the lake itself. As a nearby landowner, I'm extremely concerned about the impact on the market value of my property, which I've owned now for ten years, taking a nosedive, complicated not only by the establishment of another unregulated campground adjacent to these four parcels, but by spot zoning these parcels as CBI. I would welcome Mr. Childers to build a home on these four parcels, to establish residency and have a storage building for his boats and cars, much like my next-door neighbor has done. I would also welcome to locate his business in another area that is less residential and more conducive to plans for commercial development. This is not Rowan growing. Unlike Project Frozen, this is Rowan slowing. So I ask you, please consider your decision carefully. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jocelyn. Brad Eagle.
I'm Brad Eagle. I live at 200 Waters Road. My property adjoins the Boat and Ski Club, so I kind of back up on the backside of all this development that's being discussed here. Commissioners, I'd like to thank you guys for having us here tonight and allow us time to speak. Many of us are taking time away from our families, so your thoughtful considerations appreciated in this rezoning proposal. Some of you have taken the time to view this site personally before this meeting, so we appreciate that as well. I'm here to speak out against this rezoning. I feel it's not a good fit in the community and a detriment outweighed a few benefits to surrounding residents. This business venture is a proposed dock building business for construction, for constructing docks that we've been told is approximately twelve docks a year, half of which will be floated out of what is six-foot or less depth at full pond elevation. Cube Hydro, who owns High Rock Lake, states on their website that lake levels are maintained at up to four-foot below full pond from April through October and ten-foot below full pond from November through March. So it appears that having access to reliable water levels, this location is problematic at best. Many of us have moved into, or as myself recently built, in this area for relative peace and quiet. A six-day-a-week construction operation is not conducive to such a lifestyle. I cannot speak for my neighbors, but it's my concern that allowing this location to be zoned commercial conditional is a slippery slope and that when this venture becomes less of a value than that of a commercial property, these applicants or even new owners will attempt the full CBI zoning, further damaging the property values and appearance of the residents of Waters Edge. Recently, a Dollar General was voted down at the end of Bringle Ferry Road and Providence Church Road due to it not being a good fit for the area. This proposed rezoning is another attempt to capitalize with commercial business in a rural setting. Relatively few in the immediate area stand at any benefit in this business venture. Only those standing to make a profit by changing the land use to benefit themselves through real estate transactions are those who benefit. Once again, I want to thank you guys for your time and trust that you will take the comments and concerns of those of us that live our lives in the immediate area to heart and vote accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Davis Simmons.
3:30 Waters Road is my address. And I have to say, I was excited when I started to see the lot being cleared up there because I assumed that a house was being built there. There's quite a bit of work going on. But then I found out that that wasn't the case. And as a matter of fact, there's already been a few docks built there and floated down the lake. So I'm a little concerned, or not a little, but a lot concerned that just what is going to take place here? Because if they've already started doing these things and in strict violation of any of this without a permit or anything, now, once you approve this, who's going to monitor and what's going to happen to it? As anybody on a lake knows, anybody even boats on a lake, knows how the noise travels across the lake. And this property right here is right, beautiful spot. Look up the lake, but it's a beautiful spot to have a resident. If he had, if he was asking for a residence, putting his primary residence there, and he'd had an interest in keeping it and, you know, maintained, and was asking to just put a small boat or dock business in his property, that'd be one thing, possibly. But this thing has grown and keeps growing, and he isn't looking to put his residents here. So I'm concerned that this property is just going to be going downhill and there's going to be no control over it. And I'm just asking that you keep it residential, which is what it was, intended to be, and I feel it should be, remain residential and not an industrial park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Tyra, oh, wrong one. Jim Cartner. Mr. Cartner, welcome.
Thank you, sir. My name is Jim Cartner. I live at 430 Waters Road. I live approximately seventy-five feet from the proposed construction site. Mr. Taylor's on one side of me, Mr. Simmons is on the other side. We will bear the brunt of whatever this board decides. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about my concerns with this rezoning request. I have some additional comments about items in your packet and wish to pose some hypothetical questions along the way. Under the request section, please note that the 2,800-square-foot storage area, there is the request for 1,120 feet of a porch. Mr. Childers has explained that he's going to keep extra lumber there, 1,120 feet for extra lumber. So you have a building with almost 4,000 square feet, then you add another storage area for 23,000 square feet, so you're impacting about 27,000 square feet of land surface, just in these three items. I realize that anybody has the opportunity to start or continue a small business. Hypothetically, I ask, is all this necessary to build an estimated twelve floating docks that are 12 by 12 on a section of the lake where the water is less than two feet deep from Labor Day to Easter? A conservative capital estimate to fund this project would be a minimum of $250,000. Is this the long-term purpose, to build decks, or is this posturing for some other type of commercial activity in the future? Under the background, please be aware, this original request was for one lot for less than one acre. Mr. Childers just wanted to build floating docks legally. The lot was cleared prior to the first meeting, which I'm going to call in early May. I won't speculate about who did it, but the lot was cleared. Make no question. So even before the appeal board, or you folks heard it, he had already cleared the lot, had already built two docks. So just, just keep that, keep that in mind. Under your zoning criteria, I was not here in 2007 for the rezoning of the Z4-07 request, but I suspect an uninformed public had no idea that a trailer camper park was authorized. Now we're told it's too late to do anything. As you can tell from the number of speakers tonight, the public is better educated on the requests before you. We are here this time before it's too late. I ask you to reject this request just like you did the Dollar General store located a mere two miles away. Under the decision-making criteria, this request brings no new jobs, it has a negligible tax base implication, it decreases the public welfare by publicly destroying a section of the beach area, and it disrupts the residential area around it. The overall impact of the proposed change to the public at large is negative. It adds additional noise, it disrupts the shoreline, and eighteen existing dock builders, according to Mr. Childers, there are eighteen, are adequate to meet any demand for floating docks. So there's no pin-up demand for floating docks. Under spot zoning, size and nature, keep in mind, the original request, again, was for one acre, is now mushroomed to 25. My understanding, not confirmed, is Mr. Childers has an agreement with Mr. Lee to buy one additional adjoining lot per year for three years. Hypothetically, what started as one-acre request could now mushroom into ten. Compatibility with existing plans? The logic used by the courtesy hearing was, this is lake property, decks go with lakes, so that's compatible. Using that logic, one could argue that boats and jet skis go with the lake, so you should build a dealership and a service area, and on and on. Again, there are eighteen other dock builders, so there are plenty of people to build docks. There's no pin-up demand, so nothing is, no value is added. Impact on the neighbors and community? It's safe to say the community does not want or need a floating deck construction site on the shoreline. As a neighbor, I don't care to look at a construction site or hear the associated noises every day. Now I understand I'm going to be looking at a long fence that goes all the way down the property line. Doesn't do much for your view. Construction is noisy by nature and there's no way that you can prevent the neighbors from hearing the sounds. Many of us are retired and are at home all day, every day. We should not be penalized just so the questers can make a fast buck. Relationship between proposed changes and existing use? The 2007 zoning went through because people were unaware and did not understand what the broad ramifications were. If that request came to you today, I suggest the public would be very much against it, just like the Dollar General store. In summary, I don't think anyone believes the long-term intended use for this request is to build floating docks. I think the purpose is to get a foothold in the door, so in the future, the zoning can be changed to full commercial and the surrounding lots zoned commercial. Please stop this land sale in its track before more damage is done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cartner. Catherine Russ.
Good evening, everybody. I live at 430 Waters Road. That was my husband, Jim Cartner, who was just speaking. I want you to understand from a personal level what this is going to do to us. My husband did- to do to us. My husband did all the landscaping, from every single bush to every piece of vegetation that is on that lot. He will turn 70 in October. His only joy in life is being outdoors 24/7, almost, if I let him. But he's not out there 24/7. And all he wants to do is garden. That's, that's the remainder of his life. All he wants to do is garden. I'm now retired as well. I retired in January. I worked 30 years in a very high-stress business environment. I'm a systems analyst. And I worked very hard on call all night long so that I can afford to live in a lake environment where I now have peace and quiet. And the only time that I can have peace and quiet is during the week, because the Boat and Ski Club has constant boat traffic. There are jet skis running out there like lunatics. They think they own the lake. But there's nothing, obviously, there's nothing we can do about that. So I take my little float, my little blow-up float, and I go out on the lake, and I enjoy the peaceful, quiet nature of the lake. Now I'm going to hear skill saws and hammering and nail guns and whatever else they're going, they need to use. I don't know what it takes to build a dock, but I'm sure all of those things are required. From 9 to 5. Okay, well, that sounds reasonable. But Mr. Simmons, who spoke before us, he's also retired. And Brad is a teacher, so he's home all summer long when all this is going on. We just do not need to hear all this noise and all this commotion. And it's not fair for those of us who've worked so hard all our lives just to get a peaceful retirement. And now, all of a sudden, that's being taken away. I just really hope you understand the impact. If you, if you don't live on a lake now, and you don't understand how noise travels across the lake, it's really, shocking to me, because we've only lived there for a few years. I can hear every conversation on every boat that's docked down up on my porch. I can hear everything that's said down on the lake on those boats. So the sound does travel. The water magnifies the sound. And just like everybody else has already spoken to you, we're very concerned that you have these covenants, or I can't remember what they're called, the restrictions that you put on Mr. Childers, that it can only be from 9 to 5, and on Saturday, 9 to noon. Who's going to enforce this? When he starts getting deliveries in early in the morning or late in the evening, and he's, and he's already taken trees out when he hasn't had any permits to do so? He hasn't had any, he doesn't even own the land yet. But yet, he's already put in a gravel driveway, stripped down all the mature trees on that lot, and has seeded it. Now, it looks very nice seeded. But when mature trees are taken down, it's much easier to ask forgiveness than it is to get permission initially. And keep that in mind. That's his modus operandi. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russ. Stephen West.
Stephen West, 875 Deer Lake Run. My wife and I moved to Waters Edge a little over two years ago, from Cabarrus County, from Concord, because we love where the neighborhood is. I love driving. I work in downtown Salisbury. I love the drive through the county, seeing pasture and farmland across from our property. We have young children and just absolutely love the neighborhood and love the residential setting and where it lies. So for incredibly selfish reasons, I feel this would do damage to property values in the area, take away from the purpose of High Rock Lake, which I believe we could really improve the area by focusing on residential neighborhoods. I think this doesn't add true value to where we live. The noise on the lake would be quite a bit. The other issues I have with it would be the fact that the zoning boards and posters have mysteriously fallen down several times during this process. I reached out to add this last time because, again, when there was no weather, the zoning notice just mysteriously happened to fall to the ground yet again. And they did post it back up. So just very mysterious circumstances. But for defense of our neighborhood and for where I plan to live the rest of my life, I would love to keep this area as a peaceful, calm residential area and not further development into something that doesn't add any value to the county whatsoever. That's all.
Unless I'm missing someone, that's all I have. Is there anyone else that would like to, to speak? Came in late, didn't get a chance to sign up. Anyone? All right. We'll close the public hearing. And now we'll discuss. Can Aaron come back up?
Yeah, Aaron. All right, so I may ask you a couple of questions. So one of the questions that came up was the enforcement of the 9 to 5 and 9 to 12 on Saturday. So what, how does that work? So if he's out there working at 7 o'clock at night making noise, what do they do?
That is a bit, that'd be a bit hard for us to enforce, considering we're 8 to 5 as an office. But generally, something like that, that's a, would be a violation. We would have Lloyd go out and look at it.
So they would make a complaint to the office?
Right.
Working after hours or working in the evening. And Lloyd would come out and see if it was a violation of the conditional use?
Right.
Then he would decide, start fining him or give him warnings?
Right. We would go through the notice of violation process. So he'd get a warning letter first. Or it's typically a courtesy letter, then a warning letter, then we go to the first citation if infractions continue.
And then, so with the conditional use, refresh my memory. So anything other than what's being proposed now cannot be done out there? Or other things can be done if they fall within the?
So with the conditional district, only what's on the approved site plan with the conditions agreed upon will be allowed out there. If he wants to do any kind of expansions or add any other kind of uses, he would have to go back through this same process.
So are there other, if he were to, after he buys the property and sells the property, whoever buys the property can only have a dock building business there?
That is correct. If he sells his property, only what's on there now is what would be allowed for a new owner as well.
And so there's no loophole of any way of building a campground out there on that property?
The only way you could get a campground out there is if you went back through a rezoning process.
Get it rezoned through the planning board and through us again?
That'd be correct.
All right, thank you.
Following up on the planning board, their desire to have trees to screen the property, does that need to be, Mr. Chairman, does that need to be done during our conditional use process?
I'm sorry. Could you ask that again?
The planning board?
Yeah, so whatever.
Funded the trees to state. Now, my question simply is this, is that if we want to address the issue of trees screening to be added to the conditional use permit, is that something that we do as part of our process tonight?
Yeah, we can do what we want. So if, if we wanted to add, what are the, what are the fast-growing trees? Sorry, I'm not an arborist.
Leland Cypress?
Yeah. If, if we wanted to require that Leland Cypress be added all along the side between, what is it, a NASCAR facility there? Some, what's the big building that's being used there? What's being, there's another building besides a Boat and Ski Club.
I think it was a grading and hauling business?
Grading and hauling business. So if we wanted to, yeah, I mean, we could require that. We don't have to stick with what the planning board has recommended. We could add or take away to it. We could drop all the conditions. We could add our own, right, Jay? Yep, we can add our own.
So is that, you're talking about 205 on the map? That's a grading business. Is that what you're saying?
Can you pull, can you pull up the?
Yep.
2014 map? Yeah, so I don't know what the number 205 represents, but whatever that metal fabrication business is. Do you want to have any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah. You mentioned, Barry, can you come up? You mentioned something about having to work with Deener on the property?
Yes, on the other side over there. I met with Greg Green down there. And when we do the section over here, Mark 7, okay, for the storage gravel fenced-in area, he told me that I would have to have a site plan for doing that, because I could not disturb more than one acre at a time, okay? If I did disturb more than one acre at that time, then I would have to go for a full site evaluation. And I spoke with him on that.
So is the area where you have your buildings sighted, is that more than one acre?
No, that was not. This is only on the parcel 614-187, 614-186, and a 614-185. And he told me if I graded 614-187 and then gravelled it, then graded 614-186, gravelled it, and then grabbed, and then did 614-185, that I would not need to have a erosion control plan in place, if long as I did not disturb more than one acre at a time.
Jim, anything?
No, I think I've had all my questions answered.
Great.
I'm good.
Thank you.
So when you build a dock, are you just building a dock all day long? Take a whole day of just construction? How does that?
Well, with a floating dock, the stationary portions are built on-site. The down ramps are built on-site most of the time.
On-site?
On-site at the applicant, or at the people's houses, okay? There is where we build the floating docks, because a lot of people have a very nice landscape yard, or a yard that is very, I would say, hillish, and you do not have a flat area to build the dock on, okay? When the lake is down, that poses a great area for me to build the floating dock beside of their pier, because when the water goes down, it opens up the shoreline. So a lot of my docks I build, I build actually on the shoreline when the water's down, posing three feet down. But when the lake is full, I do not have that area to do that. So I have to have a site relatively close to the water where I can build them and put them, make them nice and square. And then we launch them into the water, and they only float in four inches of water. And then we take them and float them with a pontoon boat to the customer's house.
So in your business, sometimes you won't be building docks here?
No. And when we build a floating dock, we're generally there one day, maybe two, if it's a really technical, really nice, lot of treks decking, low voltage lighting put into the dock. Most of the time, we're only there maybe, I would say, two, maybe three times a month on average would be the only times that we're really on that property, other than maintaining it and keeping it nice and keeping the grass cut. We build, build probably two, maybe three docks a month. And a lot of times, those floating docks are not required to be built there if I can build them on-site where we do.
Is it, I would assume for your profit margin, it's better to build them where they're going to be instead of?
It is definitely better to build them at the people's houses, because when I have to hook to them and tow them, they tow very, very slow. And it sometimes can take two to three hours to tow a dock to a customer's house.
So you try to do all you can not to build a dock?
I do, I try all I can do not to build them there, but I do have to have a flat area to build them.
Barry, you mentioned the other day that you had a new piece of machinery. I can't remember the name of it.
Pile driver.
Pile driver?
Mm-hmm. And that's what we sink the post with at the house that gets the dock. We do not use it at that location at all. Now, we may bring it to that location to load some material on it, or park it there when it's not in use. But that's the only time that it'll be there. But it will never be used to drive poles there.
Okay.
It's not, not going to be stored in the water. It's not going to be docked on the water.
Well, it'll pull up by shore, yeah, and be docked by the Waters Edge like a pontoon boat. It's a floating barge.
Where are you keeping that now?
It goes from job site to job site.
Well, when it's not at a job site, where is it?
It stays docked at my house sometimes.
Okay. This is new information.
It's a unique business. There's not many of them like them.
Well, I know that. And we talked about this because I have a friend back in Wisconsin that has a pile driver, and he does all this kind of stuff. My question is, is that if your pile driver's on a floating dock or floating platform?
Mm-hmm.
You said it's at your house?
I mean?
Where are you storing it?
I mean, I keep it going from job site to job site, okay?
Okay, but it has to do it on the water?
Yes, it's a floating barge.
Okay, so?
It has a big crane on it.
So that's going to end up in front of your property here?
It none, it, it could possibly be parked there, okay? Just like people dock pontoon boats in front of their house. But yes, it is a floating barge, and it's part of my equipment. And it's part of what I need for doing dock business work.
No, I, I understand that. I'm just.
Yeah, this is.
Visualize this. So it's a floating barge?
Mm-hmm.
How tall is it?
Hmm, it'll go under bridges when the water's down. I mean, two feet down, it'll go right under a bridge. It's the height of a normal pontoon boat. I have a picture of it.
Hey, Aaron, while we're waiting for that, can you bring that map back up that had the CBI zoning and the others only had the red, red and the, yeah, thank you.
Aaron, the property across the channel from the site going along Providence Road, yeah, right in there, what is that?
The frontage, my understanding is Cube.
I believe, I think there's a.
Yeah, so the.
Right here.
Well, we're talking about across the cove. So that, I understand, is either Alcoa or Cube. I don't know if, it's probably Alcoa still. And then those are lots behind them.
I was in the understanding that that was a set aside wildlife area? Am I, maybe I heard that wrong?
Gotcha, thank you. It's game lands.
Somebody out there in a tent today had been staying and they were swimming in the front there.
She's going to, we're taking some time on this. I hope y'all are okay with that, so. Do we have any brisket leftover? Anyone want any brisket? Macaroni and cheese? Sweet tea? Sounds good? Take a five-minute recess? Ready, go. She's, she's working to put his picture of, of that equipment up there so we can all see it and appreciate it. Hey, easy. Stop that. Hey, 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 hey. Well, we'll give you an opportunity to speak. We're not going to holler stuff out. All right. So, you know, I got the same questions. You're not, you're not, you're not pile driving 365 days a year. Let's say you're doing it 28 days or 60 days a year. That's going to sit somewhere for 300 days. So where is it sitting? Is it sitting at your house?
It does sit at my house and it does sit on a trailer. And I do park it at, during the wintertime, I park it behind storage buildings at Dr. Webb's property. And that will park on that, part of that 285 number seven. And that's where I will park it on a trailer during the wintertime.
So commissioners, we, we could make a condition that this is not parked out in front of the site.
I think that'd be a very good thing.
Have you gotten complaints from your neighborhood?
Not a one.
Okay. All right, what other, what other questions do we have?
Is there anything else we need to know?
Pretty much everything. I've tried to be very open and honest and share all of it with you.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Childers. You have anything? Craig?
I have no questions, no.
Okay. Got any statements?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Commissioners, I just want to remind you that we turned down a CBI request just a mile or so away from this same property. And we redid our ordinance to make it neighborhood business so that we wouldn't have to spot zone commercial development. That's exactly what we're being asked again to do tonight, is to spot zone CBI. And that's not the intent of that property. Being as I'm from this county, my entire life, and I've been on the lake, had lake property, I know the value of peace and quiet. I know the value of having serenity. And I know the value of being retired like Mr. Carterner, that this is going to be the end of his life. And I don't think he ought to be subjected to having something else put in front of him other than what he purchased his property for. Out of all the property in this entire coastline of this lake, why does it have to be here? There's a lot of property out there that has nobody in front of it, has nobody adjacent to it, that if he wanted to build a dock place out there, great. But this neighborhood is an expensive neighborhood. There's not cheap pop-up campers sitting in it. These are nice homes. These people spent a lot of money and built our tax base to have and enjoy this lake. And I don't think it's our responsibility to take that away from them. So. So whatever, whatever motion you want to make, unless it's to deny, I'm not going to vote for it.
Thank you very much.
I'm really concerned about this. I, I think this barge thing is a real surprise. And I am not comfortable at all with this whole situation. And so I'm going to vote to deny.
All right, Mike, you have anything?
It can, Aaron, what is the, I guess, legal definition of spot zoning? Because this comes up a lot here. I mean, this is CBI, abutting to a CBI property. Is there other, what are the other factors?
It's, it's, you want to read it out of the ordinance?
Yeah, I was looking at my report and see if I identified that. But there's some tests that the courts have put together that are general, again, tests to determine what spot zoning. And some of it could be the size of the tract, benefits and detriments to both property owner or applicant and the surrounding properties. A lot of that goes back to your land use plan too, what guidance it provides, which again, we heard about the recommended neighborhood business. It even default back to the district's purpose and intent of where you're going, the CBI district. Your statements build on that too, the reasonableness. So all of these things work together. Some of it, they kind of overlap in areas, but the consistency part relates to the plan. So they all go in together. In terms of, I guess, the difficulty when you have an existing zone that you're adding on to, if you will, you know, it, we have others in the county that may already be spot zoned. Maybe this one is already. I mean, that, that is the board's decision. So it, just because, for example, if you had a one acre CBI zoned lot and you're trying to add another acre to it, it still may be spot zoning.
What you're looking for is inconsistently. And I think Shane's correct in looking at our statement of consistency. It, just because you have one there doesn't mean that it's not spot zoning to add another tract of that same zone. If it's inconsistent with your plan and if it's inconsistent with the general uses in the area, you're sort of talking about a spot that's different than everything else. That's about as simple, I think, as we can make it. If I stayed within, Shane, what you think professionally?
Exactly. Let me add to that too. Spot zoning is not illegal, but it has to be reasonable. You don't want to haphazardly just identify the winners and losers, if you will, in different spots and just have a single tract that is for one use and everything else is totally different. The previous rezoning requests we looked at, the difference in the district has a lot to do with it as well. You saw institutional allowed very similar to what RA did. That could be a component. So in that consideration, the reasonableness statement is plus the conditional district. Anything that the board could use and identify, is this reasonable for a specific purpose? Hopeful that helps.
You know, this land, it won't perk. There's not a whole lot that can be done there. When it was presented to us, we talked about it being wooded on the front, wooded on the back. And where he was going to build in the middle, couldn't even see what was going on. I didn't, I didn't have a particular problem with that. Now, things seem to have changed quite a bit. And, and so I have some, some reservations about, about actually approving this now. I hate to see any land go barren when somebody can take it and can, can do something useful with it. But having, just taking off the whole front of it up there really changes the perspective of, of trying to, to have, have some, a building in there that would be compatible with the rest of the neighborhood.
Anyone have anything else? Well, it's my turn. As she leans into the, they all lean in. You know, when this, when this started, you know, I got a call from Barry on this and I thought, you know, this is out near Water's Edge. Man, I'm not for that. I've, I've talked to lots of people about this. I've had folks mostly concerned about campgrounds. That's what the most of the concern of people that I spoke to me was about campgrounds. I've had a lot of people say, I'm really not bothered by what he wants to do. I wonder if that's what he really wants to do. I wonder if he's trying to get his foothold in for campgrounds. As I looked at the aerial of this though, because I'm not as familiar of the lake, you know, I saw that it's separated by a big metal building that something's going on there. Don't know what, I still don't know what it is. You know, I've been down there and spent an hour there. I could have knocked on the door, I guess, and tried to find out. But when I pulled up and saw, you know, that this isn't going next door to a house. This is separated by commercial business already. So that made me start thinking a little differently. So I don't know what you're shaking your head about. I mean, there's two businesses between the residents in this proposed area. Let me say this before I go any further. There's no Board of Commissioners that's even paid one second of attention to High Rock Lake. Not one. In fact, this county has sat by while that lake and its opportunity has been squandered. While other counties got involved and got theirs from Alcoa, this county sat silent. And we're sitting here with a mess on our side that we're finally trying to pay attention to. So we're at the table with Cube now. We're still at the table with Alcoa. We're working on issues that should have been worked on decades ago. We sat by while other counties that border High Rock Lake put in restrictions for campgrounds that we refuse to do. So I want y'all to know that this board is sensitive to what's going on there. Most of us believe that High Rock Lake is an opportunity for Rowan County that has not been, we've had no attention paid to. And I don't want to call attention, but I've been the most vocal about that. I've taken beatings from the dark side about that. I've been harassed about the idea of trying to turn High Rock Lake into the diamond that I believe it can be. So please don't sit there and shake your head and think that I don't care about High Rock Lake. I'm the guy that started that conversation, okay? But when I look at the aerial map and it's separated by two businesses and then I look what's to the left and I think, what in the world else is going on in there? What is, what is going to be put in those remaining lots? I wouldn't put a house there. I mean, I just wouldn't. Now, I can't judge, maybe some would. But you've, I stood out there where the building will go and no offense to, there's no one in this room that's only 75 feet from this. I'm sorry. I mean, we, we just had a picture of a map up and there's a, there's a scale on that map. And we measured out between 600 and 700 feet by the map. So no one's only 75 feet. Now, I stood where the building would go and I could see through the woods, maybe a house. I didn't know there were three houses there. I walked all the way down to the water. I walked up around the cove. I went out on that pier and then I did see that there were three houses. So I know they're there. But then the, the water line wraps around the corner. So I don't know who's around the corner, if there's anyone that's here tonight that's around the corner or if everyone that's here is part of those three houses that would be affected. It gave me a total, totally different view of this whole issue when I got out there and looked at it because to me, it appeared that there would be three houses affected. So the, the issue that was brought to me over and over and over, the concern about the campground, 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 campground. And we can assure you that no campground is, is going here. And by the way, I didn't tell you this. Spoke to Planning Director Ed Muir last week. We've been speaking about the issues of campgrounds for some time. While Davidson County changed the rules on their campgrounds and Rowan County did not, we are now going to address that. All five commissioners, in unison, we have contacted the planning department and we have told the planning department that we would like them to take up a study on campgrounds and revise our campground rules. So now, we, we don't know how that will affect existing campgrounds, if legally anything can be done with those. The fact is, we think campgrounds can be an asset to Rowan County because it brings people here to see our community, to see the lake. It brings outside dollars into Rowan County. We believe good quality campgrounds are an asset to the community. So folks who want to build them and want to build them to standard and want to make them an asset for the community, we say welcome. them an asset for the community, we say welcome. But we are going to look at that for the first time since 1998, and we're going to revise the campground rules. Now, things that were said today, they're, this shouldn't be business. Well, we've already got business there. It doesn't serve a public good. We don't determine that. The market determines that. I heard that over and over. This doesn't serve a public good. I'm not so bold as to declare that. There are things that I have no use for that others do. So, saying that it doesn't serve the public good, I don't believe is a fair statement. How will it improve the public? Again, I don't decide that. The market does. If no one has use for this man's craft, then he goes out of business. That's the way the market works. There's few benefits. Few will benefit. Noise travels. I understand that. Is this posturing for a future endeavor? These are just notes that I've taken. He could be. I don't know that. Someone asked me, and I heard one of the Brad's, I don't know if you've got to be named Brad to get into that neighborhood, but one of the Brad's, I don't recall, said, you know, if we, if we approve this, and it's a foot in the door to something else, and let me just tell you, you could have County Commissioners in four years, eight years, 10 years, 20, 30 years, decide that they want to zone for a strip club out there. It all could change. We're speaking for ourselves and the control that we have, and I believe everyone's united, and we certainly would not want to have a campground out there. There's enough dock builders, someone said. We don't determine that. I am disturbed. I want to tell you something else, too, because you all need to know this. Barry Childers is a friend of mine. I moved here in 1995. Barry and his family has, have had insurance with my business for a long time, so I need to let you know that. I've known Barry a long time. I've looked Barry in the eye and said, "If you're planning on doing something different here that I don't know about, it's not going to happen." And so, it, you know, I don't want to embarrass him. I am bothered. I don't, I still don't know if I've got a straight answer on clearing that off. You know, maybe Barry thought this would be okay. This would be fine. There's businesses there. This'll fly through. I'm going to get started ahead of time. I'm going to clear. I don't know what happened there. That bothers me. The issue of the barge, you know, I think that can be taken care of. So, this is, this is hard, because I have a heart for High Rock Lake, and I'm one of the guys that's driving a call for change out there. And as, I would invite you guys, there was an article in the paper recently. We have put together a group of folks that are just residents of the lake who are getting together and having conversations about how we can make High Rock Lake better, how they can make it better. And I'm at those meetings. I would invite you guys to be part of these conversations. And the conversations center around bringing retail in. Folks want a place where they can shop out there, so they don't have to go all the way in town. They'd like to have some retail. They'd like to have restaurants, where you can pull up on the water and have restaurants. And I'm, I'm from Winter Haven, Florida. We had 100 lakes in my town, and they were all connected by canals on Friday and Saturday. There were hundreds and thousands of boats that were all docked at restaurants around the lake, and folks would like to see that. They'd like to see boat sales. At least, the folks that are meeting with us would like to see boats and boat sales and service places and service organizations and retail and things like that. And so, that's, I think this is not, this is the beginning of some problems we're going to have. I mean, good news and bad news comes when the economy's bad and when it's good. When the economy's bad, the bad news is, the economy's bad, but no one's having anything built around them, so they're happy. When the economy gets good, things, any realtors in the room that are buying and selling things? So, when the economy starts going well, things begin to be built, and then we get rooms full of folks saying, "Don't build it in my neighborhood." And so, we're going to begin to have these growth problems as our county begins to grow, which we've needed to do for decades, and we're going to have decisions to make, and we're going to have more things like this, not less. And we're going to have to decide how to handle those. So, those are the comments I've got. I'm trying to drive some positive stuff out at the lake. I would invite you to come to me, contact me afterwards. I've met with several of you. I've spoken with a lot of you on the phone. I've gotten emails from you. I'd like to make you part of this discussion, because this is going to become more and more of a discussion as growth comes about. So, you know, I may be the only one, and I don't want any of you all to take it that I'm not listening to you. Again, come see me afterwards. This is, this is not personal either way. Met with Mr. Bost, had conversations with him and a lot of folks. I think, I think we could make this work. I'm willing to put additional conditions on there. Not a fence, maybe Leland Cypress's, and I would not want that boat parked out front. If his neighbors like it in their neighborhood and okay with it, I'd leave it there, or he could trailer it and put it back in the woods in his fenced-in area. But that's, that's what I have to say.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I agree with you. You know, when we get elected, we have to sit up here and make decisions, and these are the ones that I don't think any of us like, because people are, you know, involved in it, because they live there. You know, we don't live there, so we don't have to necessarily live with the aftermath of our votes. But we try to do the best that we can to preserve property rights and also try to make the right decisions for the community and for the, for the lake as a whole, or the county as a whole, I should say. You know, I don't, I don't know that I would want this near me, but, you know, I don't live there. You know, I live up in, in the woods, and I don't know that anybody would want to build a boat docks near my house. But it's always a balancing act, and I think, such a twirl, everything has been followed. Now, you know, there's always the letter of the law and the intent. You know, I do find it disturbing that maybe some things were changed from the original when the process started, as far as land being cleared. So, I would have to, I would have to support this, only from the standpoint that I don't see any, I personally don't see anything that hasn't been followed as far as, such itorally is concerned. You know, it's that thing, what you just mentioned. I mean, the economy's good. People want to do things. People want to buy things, build things. And so, we're going to have to live with the growth pains of that. I mean, that's what we've wanted around here for a long time, this county. So, I can under, like I said, I can understand the people that are going to live there. You know, some of the things that I had questions about, you know, if he, if it's financially better for him to build the docks somewhere else, I think, you know, he said he was going to do that. So, I don't, I don't think that he would be out there nine to five every day, hammering and nailing and running his solves. But I'm sure that some of that'll come up sometimes. I can agree that, you know, we should, if, and I don't think, I don't think the board's going to vote for this, it seems like, but I think we should add a restriction on the boat if, if we do ultimately approve this, that it's not docked out in front of the property. I think he said he can pull it up, put it in the fenced area anyway during the winter, and even, I guess he leaves it at the job sites the other times. Like I said, it's, it's not an easy decision, and it's, you know, we all took the, took this job knowing that there's some times we have to make, you know, some people unhappy. And, you know, I'm sorry that it doesn't, we can't find, we couldn't be able to find something that everyone's going to be happy with. I would say, if this does pass, that, you know, Mr. Childers needs to be a good community member, a good neighbor. There are recourses. We've set up here before from we've had ordinance violations that we've had to, I think, when we got to the point where we almost had to vote to do, sorry, eviction process for fines and things. So, there are recourses that the citizens can take, if there's, if there are work done after the, the hours that are permitted in the conditional use. So, that's all I have.
All right. Thanks, Mike. Before we take a vote, I do want to reiterate one thing and point something out. There's a lot of new stuff that's happening in Rowan County that we've not done before. Mike is a police officer and a former IT guy for Bank of America.
Wachovia.
Wachovia, sorry. Didn't mean to. Mike's a great guy. She is a retired Lutheran minister and farmer. I'm an insurance guy. This guy's an insurance guy, and he raises cattle. This guy sold a construction company, very successful. We don't know how to build interchanges. We're dealing with interchange stuff right now in water sewer. None of us have ever built an interchange. None of us have ever tried to rebuild an economy that's been devastated by manufacturing that left, left the country. We've not had to deal with this with High Rock, because, number one, no one's ever paid attention to it and dealt with it. High Rock is going to be a hot commodity. It is now. I think most of the houses being sold out there are being sold at private sale, because it's, it's a popular place. There's a lot that is going to happen here that have happened for the first time and some for the first time in decades, so we're trying to do the best we know how, based on the experience that we have. I say that again to say, if you are interested in High Rock Lake and having a say in the direction that it goes, because we've got 12 or 15 folks who are passionate about it that want to see some things happen, come see me, and let's make you part of that discussion, so everyone understands. I asked Ed a couple of weeks ago, I said, you know, should we look at some lake-wide zoning, so we just gnaw this off one time and we don't have to bring this before the board every single time and have this fight? And at this point, it looks like we're willing to have this fight every time and just talk about each one as they come along and determine on its own merits what we do with it. But growth is coming, and we're going to have to figure out how to handle that from a lake perspective and a lot of perspectives as things begin to happen here in Rowan County. Is that fair enough? So, will you see me? If you're really interested, don't just be involved in your own neighborhood issue, but help us, because none of us live at the lake. Help us be part of crafting something that we can all be real proud of as an asset for the community. So, I'm, so do we have, we have a motion one way or the other on this?
I make a motion to deny the request.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of denying the request, say aye.
Aye.
All right. All opposed? Aye. All right. Motion is denied. And Mr. Childers? So, we're going to move on. Did everyone want to stay for the rest?
I'd explain to them, I think, some people.
May I say something?
Yeah. So, what, what that, what that means is the, the motion was not, the zoning was not approved.
Yes, sir. And I would just like to add, the metal building that you were talking about, I don't know what goes on there. Whatever goes on there, it is quiet and you never hear.
Well, that's good.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could interject, we do need statements for our denying.
Okay.
Do?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any of those?
We do not.
You want me to do them?
Would you like to craft some?
I'll just do it right here. Let me get back on the chair.
Well, I think if you look at, I don't know, was, did you have a worksheet in your packet for statements?
You had state, we had statements.
Okay.
We have statements of reasonableness and consistency.
I think an easy one possibly on the consistency part is the planned recommended neighborhood business and not CBI. You could also look at-
All right. So, Z0318 is inconsistent with the East Rowan Area Land Use Plan. Would we continue, based on the following?
Any facts want to include in that? Obviously, you had folks here in their interest, a number of folks in attendance, the district's purpose and intent also for CBI.
I'm on page five. What page are you on?
I'm not really on a page. Just kind of the, the consistency worksheet is what we go through with the Planning Board to develop these statements. So, I think from a consistency standpoint, your plan, the district's purpose and intent, and is the request reasonable and in public interest, the folks that you heard from tonight, you could use that.
We've had a general motion to deny the request, and we'll prepare the statements for review, and we can put it on the next consent agenda and review and approve it.
That's fine.
Retroactive.
Thank you very much. Aaron, you're on again.
Before we go forward, I do have a question. I'm not sure who exactly would answer this, but since the vegetation has been removed from that lot, 614-188, there has been some pretty severe erosion.
They, they would just need to direct that to Greg Green.
Greg Green? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, Aaron.
All right. So, the next thing we have up here is the-
Great. Is this about the lake?
Yep.
Way to go, Aaron.
It's about the lake.
No.
Well, I think this is a little bit happier or easier to deal with here today. This is the permit-to-exceed request, O218. This is the Rowan County Chamber of Commerce requesting their fifth annual dragon boat festival at the Shrine Club at the lake. So, as with any permit-to-exceed, there are 10 standards that must be met, so I'm just going to kind of run through those real quick. The timeliness of the application. The planning staff received the application on May 25th, which is well in advance for consideration today, which is well in advance of the planned date of July 28th. The nature of the requested activity. This event's just a lakeside festival with boats, races, games, and food vendors. Previous experience with the applicant. This is the fifth annual festival. The only ever issue we've had is a little bit of minor traffic increases, and I emailed the sheriff to confirm that. The time of the event. The event will be on Saturday, July 28th, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Other activities in the vicinity, there are none to our knowledge. Frequency of the event. This is an annual event. The cultural and social benefits of the proposed event, and this is going to have about 1,500 people and hopes to raise money for local businesses in Rowan County. The effect of the activity on adjacent residential area. As you can see, if you look at the map here, we do have a little bit of residential development close to the Shrine Club, but most of the activity is going to be taking place on the opposite side here. most of the activity's going to be taking place on the opposite side here. And then, number nine is previous violations of any by the applicant and we have not had any. And then, adjoining property owners in surrounding locations are notified, uh, by the planning department within 72 hours of the consideration for the Board of Commissioners and we notified them 12 days before this meeting on June 6th.
All right, I think everyone's, uh, familiar with this, so, we'll go ahead and, any questions for Aaron? All right, if not, um, thank you and we'll open up for, um, public hearing, if anyone has anything to say, either way on this. All right, hearing none, we'll close and, um-
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to pass P E 0218.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else, anything else for us tonight?
That's all I got.
Nothing lake related.
How about not coming back for a while?
I'll try.
Thank you guys very much. All right, financial report? We're almost done.
The, um, first graph shows the revenue comparisons for the last four years. To date, through the month of May, we have received $123.6 million, which represents 88% of the budget. Um, that is the same percentage as last year and is comparable to the prior two years. So, that, that's going as expected. The next graph shows expenditure comparisons for the same time period. We have spent $127.4 million, which represents 83% of the budget and the prior three years were 82%, 83 and 83%. So, that's right where I would expect also. The next graph shows, um, current year property tax collections through the month of April. We have received $77.5 million in property taxes and, um, that is 98.5% of budget. The prior two years were 100% and 101%, which, um, 2016 was a reval year and that is always the most difficult year and, um, the finance department and the tax administration department are usually conservative in that year. So, so that's also as expected. The last two graphs show sales tax information. Through the month of February, we have received $15.9 million in sales tax, which is, um, 67% of budget, which in 2017, we were also at 67% of budget. And, um, we, it, since the first half of the fiscal year, we're starting to show some separation. So, now, um, collections versus prior year, um, we're showing an increase of 5.5%, which is looking good. It's making me happier.
And as long as you're happy.
That's what I figured.
Yeah. We all serve at your-
I appreciate it.
At your pleasure, Leslie. May, may we continue on to the next?
We can.
All right, next item, selecting a voting delegate for the NCACC conference, my understanding is Mike is going. Is that right, Mike? Congratulations, my friend. I make a motion that Mike, uh, represent us at the NCACC concert. We have a motion, a second.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Mike. Volunteering. Uh, budget amendments, do we have a motion?
Vote approval.
And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then, we have closed session, so let me, um, read this. Board is asked to enter into closed session accordance with North Carolina General Statute 143 3181183 for attorney-client privilege, communication regarding settlement of a potential claim and for settlement of a past due claim. And, uh, in accordance to North Carolina General Statute 143 318.1186 for personnel matter. So, it is currently, uh, according to Apple, 8:36, so let's start back at 8:45. All right, uh, we're coming out of, motion to come out of closed session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we've been discussing in closed session, uh, the competitiveness of, uh, the, the pay for our county clerk. It's come to our attention that, um, we are overly compet- I mean, uh, uh, under-competitive. So, uh, we're here to make a motion and do we have a motion?
Make a motion, uh, we raised to 60,000 annually.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
What, uh, just make sure it's effective today.
Well, let's make it tomorrow.
Yeah. Payroll's closed tonight.
I'm kidding. Yeah, yeah. All right, because of pay period? All right, got it. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anyone?
Nobody's got enough nerve.
Anyone? All right, motion care-
Make a motion to approve the settlement with Crash Morrison.
All right, motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Jay, is that enough?
Move to adjourn.
We don't have to do the septic tank?
Now, I'll say that again. What about the septic tank? Don't we have to-
Say second, say second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, have a good night. Thank you, April.